As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day. And we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. First, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Up next, your consent agenda.
Move we approve?
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, under administrative items will be the public art advisory board bylaws update.
Yes, recently, the public art advisory board met and they are presenting to you some suggestions. They'd like to update their bylaws with the two major changes being they would like to remove their term limits. Currently, of our seven advisory boards, two have term limits. They are one of them. So they would like to remove that. And also, they would like to remove the portion where they vote in a secretary and change that to a co-chair based on the changes with taking minutes, et cetera. So again, the biggest change is just removing the term limits.
All right. I'm good with that. Any questions or comments?
May I raise your hand?
Mr. Bowen?
I make a motion with adopt resolution 2021-53.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the resolution 2021-53. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And next, we're going to have new town of Clayton employee introductions.
Good evening, council. I'd like to introduce Aaron Pritchard, the new planner two to you tonight. He comes to us by way of a town in Western Wake County. And previous to that, worked for a private consulting firm out in Wisconsin. He has an undergraduate from UNC, which we won't hold against him, and a master's degree from University of Wisconsin at Madison. He's been working in planning field now for a little over five years, has his ASC, and is working on finishing up getting his certified zoning officer certification. So please welcome Aaron and give him an opportunity to speak.
Awesome. Thanks, Ben. Yeah, good to meet you. I guess last Monday, it was planning board, and this Monday, it's town council. So yeah, great to meet all of you. I had the privilege of working with Ben before and have the greatest confidence that he's going to do a great job as the new planning director here. On a personal note, we both have young sons, about a month and a half apart in age. So have had the chance to hang out outside of work as well. So yeah, any questions? Happy to help, happy to answer anything.
Questions or comments?
Welcome to the team.
Yeah.
Can you help Ben get that thing out?
You might need to get the engineer for that one.
That's priceless. So I'll buy a little time for Ben and take the spotlight off of him and tell you, welcome to town of Clayton. And as a mayor, as the mayor and a East Carolina university graduate, there's really only one Carolina, and it's East Carolina.
I guess I just have to take that, right? You are the mayor.
Well, I got some people on this side that want to cheer, but I can't let them cheer right now. No, we're glad to have you here. Welcome. It says a lot for you to be offered a job by the town of Clayton as it's very competitive. So we're excited to have you be a part of our team.
Yeah, very excited to be here. Yeah, I got to go to Harvest Festival on Saturday, and it was a lot of fun. So excited.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes, sir. No, let me thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of town council. Tonight, I have the pleasure of finally introducing our communications team for the town of Clayton. Let me begin with our newest employee, Catherine Kat White, as we all know her. She is our communication and marketing specialist. Now, Kat first joined the town of Clayton family as an intern back in June of 2021. And after a very successful internship and a highly competitive application process, she is now serving as our communication and marketing specialist. Now, prior to coming to the town, she graduated summa cum laude from East Carolina University, a BS in Communications and Public Relations, and a BFA in Dance and Choreography. Now, Kat said she chose to pursue a career in public relations because she enjoys crafting positive narratives and using her creativity to connect the public with valuable information. The town of Clayton is special to her because of its wonderful and unique charm. She hopes to continue to help the town welcome new events, people, businesses, while maintaining our hometown vibe. When asked why Clayton, Kat replied, Clayton is a growing community, and this town has a lot to offer. I grew up in Clayton, and to see this town's potential is inspiring to me. I want to be part of our growth and contribute to that success. Kat White.
Awesome.
Thank you, Nathaniel, for that introduction. It's really awesome to be standing here again, talking to you guys. Like he said, my internship was really incredible. I learned so much and knew that this was a place I wanted to be, and this was a place where I could really make a difference. So I really look forward to being a part of this team and being a part of this town and expanding our communications and marketing efforts.
Awesome. Well, we are glad you have chosen Clayton for a full-time position, and we're very fortunate to have you. So great work, Nathaniel.
Yeah, welcome. Give Nader just a second to come out of the closet, so Kat can get back there, help him out.
So please let me introduce to you, Nader Abel Holson, our communication development
specialist. Nader officially joined the town of Clayton in July 2019 as a communication specialist. Since then, he has covered all the major events, including Harvest Festival, July 4th, Christmas tree lighting, numerous town square concerts and art exhibits, and many other important moments in the town. In his first year with the town, he played a major role with the Parks Bond by creating a series of well-planned informational videos. In 2020, he worked with the cultural arts department to figure out how to livestream high-quality concerts and interactive plays with live Zoom audience participation in the auditorium. Video production is a major passion for Nader. He is and has been since he was a small child, when his parents bought him his first video camera at the age of nine so he could make SWAT team movies. He feels strongly that video is an extremely effective communication tool. In his new role as a communication development specialist, he plans to do more than just capture events. He has many new ideas on how we can use video to help us tell Clayton's story. As a communication development specialist, he'll be working more independently with other departments, and he is confident in his ability to work well with everyone to come up with new ideas to better support the town. When asked why Clayton, Nader said, it's the people. I know that's the obvious answer, but for me, it's true. I genuinely feel that this is a great community, and it's a great place for families. I have covered so many different events through the years, I know firsthand what an amazing place Clayton can be. Nader, if you want to say a little something?
Yeah, don't have too much to add to what Nathaniel said, but I do love my job here with the town, and I'm looking forward to being more involved in helping to tell Clayton's story. And I do want to just say, the last seven months working with Nathaniel has been, really enjoyed it, and I think he's doing a great job. And I'm glad we're able to add Kat to the team, even though she constantly makes me feel a little old, but you know, it's good. But yeah, thank you for this opportunity. I'm excited to keep working here with you guys.
Well, we're excited too, because if you don't know, Nader is highly regarded and very highly sought after for his incredible talent. And it's just more than your work and your ability to create, it's how you create. And I can only speak personally from my experience, but I have friends all across the United States, and when they see those Clayton videos that I share or post, they're just like, wow, you know, I don't know who does all that for you. But they're, and of course, they obviously already know that Jody didn't do it, right? Okay, so that's a given. But you know, I always thank them and let them know we have a tremendously strong, talented communications team with the town of Clayton, and we all feel very fortunate for that. So thank you, Nader.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Thompson?
I just want to say, I really think we can, we've seen a tangible step up in our level of communications just in the last few months. It seems like when Kat came on board, even as an intern, she hit the ground running as if she was a full-time employee. And her work is phenomenal. And Nader has a proven track record of being great at everything he does with video and Nathaniel pulling everybody together. I really think this team is probably as highly functional as it's ever been. And just over the last two or three months, I have seen that just to me, you can touch the improvement so good, you can really, you know, it's a tangible improvement over, you know, just a step up from, you know, just when you think we're doing it the best, we take it to another level, and that's what you've done. So you've built a great team, Nathaniel.
Thank you, sir. And we plan on doing a lot more of that.
Awesome. All right. Up next on the agenda is the public hearing. The first one is the 2020-104 SD's Lumen subdivision.
Good evening again, council. The applicant has requested that this item be tabled until November 15th meeting at 6:00 PM. And that would be the public hearing and the potential action of approval of 2021-04 SD, as well as the related other three actions of approval of resolution 2021-54, approval of reimbursement agreement, and approval of option to purchase agreements.
All right. Do we need to have a motion for that to postpone it?
Move we table it to 15th.
Okay, have a motion and a second to table these items until the November 15th meeting at 6:00 PM. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we recommend a continuation of the next item to the same date.
All right. The next item is the economic development incentive agreement, and they are requesting also to table this until the November 15th meeting.
Move we table it to the 15th.
Second. We have a motion and a second to table the economic development incentive agreement till November the 15th. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, under old business is the purchasing policy revision.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, town council, interim manager, Mr. Coppola, and our deputy town managers, Ms. Gill and Mr. Barbie. My name is Sean Mizell. I'm the procurement, contracts, and MWBE manager for the town. And I'm coming before you tonight just to give you a quick overview of the procurement policy that we developed. I hope everyone had a chance to read that and the package. I've worked very hard for the last couple of months to put that together. And so as a quick overview, I just wanted to say, what I did was, I took the policies we already had in place, the MWBE, the procurement policy back from 2012, the uniform guidance, and the surplus policy. And we thought it would be a great idea to consolidate those into one document to have instead of having four or five different documents in the library. So I made that pretty concise, informative, and very clear to follow. Tonight, I'm going to set forth that we set a public hearing next week for the MWBE portion of this, because as we were doing this, we realized that we needed to have a public hearing for the MWBE portion before we could, you know, make a motion to move forward with the procurement policy. So I'm setting forth that we have our public hearing at our next meeting on November 15th. I'll go into more detail at that time on the procurement policy with you guys and give you, you know, a better understanding of what was in the policy. So at this time, are there any more questions?
Questions for staff? Mr. Granis?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Sean, I was in procurement for almost 20 years, and a segment of that was as a procurement director. And I just want you to know, this is some good stuff. And I want to thank you and acknowledge you for putting this together.
Thank you.
It's good stuff.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Thank you, council.
Thank you. If not, we'll set a public hearing for November 15th, 2021. Up next on the agenda is the Raleigh wastewater capacity agreement amendment.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'll go ahead and take that one. You should have a copy of the agreement at your places in case you want to look at it. There was one minor change that did not get included in the version that was put out last week. But essentially, this is the agreement that I alluded to last week that we have planned to bring forward. We've been working with the city of Raleigh, well, the town's been working with the city of Raleigh for quite some time, as evidenced by our existing agreements. But we've been talking to them about potentially increasing the total amount of wastewater flow that we can send to them through the 2027 period that we are already contracted with them to do. Effectively, what that'll do is allow us to get some breathing room with regard to the timeline of our current wastewater treatment plant construction. Right now, that project is still slated to finish up sometime in late 2024. However, with supply chain issues and just overall the pace of the project, what we've done here is requested an additional .75 million gallons per day, or 750,000 gallons per day. That will allow us to leverage the existing infrastructure we already have out there at the Clayton to Raleigh pump station site and the force main associated through that period, as well as all the way to 2027, should we need it. But effectively, that allows us to manage the current flows and gives us, again, some of that delay mitigation potential through this. As part of this agreement, the city of Raleigh has changed the structure in which they do their billing. So in all, we've actually agreed to move to the current structure of the billing. There's already an increased cost for having the ability of the additional 750,000 gallons. However, based on their new structure, it may actually be a benefit to the town overall. So our recommendation is to move forward with entering into this agreement. And obviously, we will continue to work with the city of Raleigh as we move forward. Any questions?
Mr. Grass?
Just wanted to correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, but does that not take us to 2.25 million?
That would take us to one point, excuse me. The agreement with the city of Raleigh would take us to a total of 1.75 million gallons per day that we can send to the city of Raleigh.
So we were at a 1 million gallon?
We were at 1 million even, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Holder?
I move we authorize staff to execute this agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second to authorize the staff to execute this agreement with the Raleigh water wastewater capacity agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. I do want to just note that the city of Raleigh council will be taking this up at their meeting on the 16th. So now that we've passed it, they will move forward theirs. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Rich. Up next, under old business, is the growth plan discussion.
director. I promise you, it's going to take longer for this to load than I'm hoping. This isn't, pretend the length of my presentation here today. So I wanted to do is provide an update on the growth plan. We've had a lot of movement and momentum on this since the joint meeting of the town council and the planning board in September, and wanted to give an update. The planning board saw this at the end of last month, and moving forward in our process and the timeline as we had laid out previously. There we go. All right. So want to just, again, discuss the plan at a high level here, go over some of the revisions since the 9/15 version, open any discussion or questions you all have, and just look at next steps there, moving forward from here. And then at the end, request going forward for a public hearing at the next meeting, November 15th. So for everyone here, I know you all know this, but a comp plan is really that kind of guiding document for the town here. The last comp plan that we had was adopted in 2015. The future land use map was one of the pieces that really needed to be updated given the level and the pace of growth and just kind of the change in character here. Some clarification on some key policies and some other pieces like our roadway map, and also just some, setting the stage for some key plans that are going to come before the council and be staff activity here in the coming months and years here that we thought that was important to be able to point to in this. So again, what's driving a lot of this, we've seen, we just saw the census. As you all know, the town, you know, grew by 63% from the 2010 census, and now is over 26,000. And that is relevant on one of our changes here that we made. Of that, in terms of pending development, there's, give or take, 7,000 homes that have been entitled but have not been built yet. Our average is about two and a half people per house. So that means over 17,000 people in terms of population that could happen here within our ETJ. Public engagement has been an important piece. This has been, this work really has been going on since early 2000. We had a big community survey. We had, you know, say, a 10% response rate, which is actually really high for these kinds of surveys. We've had public meetings in the winter of 2020 with a number of different stakeholder groups, and another public meeting here, October 7th. And some of these changes came from that as well, as well as the online comment period that was opened from the, basically, when we did the last public meeting until through the public forum out there, October 7th. You can see our planning director, Ben Howell, there as part of that great session out there. So the growth plan is organized in this way, with chapters here in these number of areas, really lays out a vision about a thriving, diverse community, keeping that small town ambiance and feel, a great home for families to live in, which we have, really supporting quality housing, easy access to shopping and dining, and all the amenities and parks and schools that really make a high quality of life that's both great for the residents here, but also a great economic development tool. And that creates a vibrant downtown and growing businesses across the town and in the downtown as well. So that is organized into these different seven chapters. So land use, land use and housing, arts and culture, transportation mobility, services and infrastructure, downtown, economic growth, and parks and recreation. And it's organized here in a pretty consistent model here of a high-level goal, a policy underneath that, and then some strategies in terms of how we all might work together to accomplish the policy and the ultimate goal. So looking at the future land use map, there are some minor changes on the neighborhood and community centers compared to the old map. The employment areas, we did expand. It's important to have that tax base there, important to have those jobs here. Those are money and paychecks that get spent within the town. Updated on some of the residential growth, we actually showed the flood plains as open space, which is, I think, a great addition there. And a few changes to the downtown and adding a section. We'll talk about those in specificity here. So these are overall, all the changes. And again, we'll talk about these. If we look at land use, that future land use map, again, was changed in some of those character areas were updated. The ETJ, so when I talked about the growth being at 26,000, now that we are over 25,000 in population, that allows the town to look at a three-mile ETJ boundary instead of the two miles. So that's something we wanted to make sure a strategy was in there from the last meeting. Looking at really clarifying in terms of gateways in the downtown area that we also, we talked about a downtown master plan, but making sure that that included the eastern and western gateways, as there's a lot of activity there, both in the Business 70 area, but also developments like the West End and even out to Shotwell Road that have a lot of economic activity and really serve as those gateways there. We looked at different housing types, accessory dwelling units being one of them that wanted to point out. And we did have a public comment that we looked at. We didn't end up making a change, but there is a segment between Durham and John that was actually raised a high-density residential here. We feel like that fits the character versus the medium-density residential. That does not mean that it has to be high-density and has to be all apartments that fit that, but I think it represents the existing character that does have those townhomes and apartment complexes already in there. So we decided not to make that change, but certainly did a, you know, a pretty deep dive into that to make sure that that was appropriate based on that comment. Downtown, looking at the map here, we actually revised this from the 15 and extended it. It looks more similar to the previous land use map, extending some of the properties on the south side of Main Street there to continue to include those. Got some feedback in terms of density, in terms of if we're trying to create a more dense downtown with residential over time, which has been a long-stated goal, that really making sure that those units were up to 25 instead of 20, that meets really what the market is there for those. Talk about electric vehicles changes, some of the parking recommendations, and some of the great work that the Parking Task Force is doing, wanted to reflect that. Setting the stage for additional sidewalks and crossings in the pedestrian plan and the downtown master plan, and also in addition of something, a piece of legislation around social districts that do allow towns, something that a lot of towns have been advocating for, that was passed recently by the legislature that allows a social district to be created, which means you can designate certain times. you can designate certain times, certain dates and times where you can have a more kind of free, open atmosphere where alcohol can be consumed without alcohol fencing and things like that. So that's something that was passed and something that we want to investigate, certainly not locking anything in, but something that could be a tool for downtown. Economic development, we realized in our review that, you know, Project Goodwill, that's a big deal, that needed to be reflected there with some specificity. A point to combining some of these, a couple of the bullet points, I'm all about, if we can get as few bullet points and be as concise as possible, that's a great way to get a plan to move forward. Business retention, a comment from the planning board and others is really making sure to emphasize a focus not just on downtown businesses, but really across the town. That's something I think of and embody there, but really want to make sure that that is spelled out so really all the businesses here know that we care about them and we care about their health here and their continued expansion. And lastly, looking at ways that we can use existing either partners or looking at existing facilities to talk about visitor center, welcome center, and some kiosks around town. It's a conversation on parks and natural resources, on both sides of those. So do we define the term spine greenways? That wasn't defined and said, what is this? So that's really, what are the greenways that exist now? What are those key corridors? And then, you know, building off of those in future investments that could come from public or private development. Looking at, you know, acknowledging in the public safety standpoint that we now have officers out on the greenways and acknowledging the fact that that's something from even a perceived or real safety is important. Better coordination and increased coordination there with Wake County and the city of Raleigh on signage. Our users don't see those boundaries, so when you cross the county line there, they see it just as the same piece of greenway. And I think we need to do a better job of working together to make sure that we're working seamlessly, making joint investments even on those things, on signage and wayfinding where it makes sense. Others related to just overall improvements here and getting the Parks and Rec Plan moving. And then last, really reviewing development proposals as much as we can to understand where parks fit into that and kind of clarifying some of those. On the natural resources, a few of these recommendations, maybe just taking back a little bit where there was maybe too much specificity for a large, kind of high-level document on this, how do we make that a little higher elevation and let things like the code rewrite really be the ones that, you know, kind of bear that out a little more and to talk about open space improvements downtown, clarifying some of that, as well as railroad corridor, talking about the importance of the farmer's market, low-impact developments, and looking at, again, that kind of elevation for the existing resources map. And almost through my list of changes here that we looked at here, mostly minor on the services, infrastructure, and mobility. Actually, I had a great conversation with our stormwater engineer. A lot of those things were in alignment with the existing policy here. Some clarification on library investments and kind of what we mean by those. And transportation, really just renaming that right-of-way map to the roadway system map. A big addition here from the last time you saw was, is the implementation plan. And this is, I think, a great way for both staff and council to work together on how do we accomplish these goals? If this is our vision, if this is our North Star, how do we put some timelines? How do we put some ownership on these really going forward to make sure that we accomplish this? And this isn't a plan that just gets adopted and put on a shelf and then we go on and forget about it. This is, we've put a lot of time and energy in this, and the public has as well, and we want to make sure we accomplish these goals. And really, that comes down to most, the majority of our edits here were additional specification on, and specificity on who owns some of these as responsible parties and clarifying a few of these goals. These stacked recommendations and edits here were adopted as part of the recommendation from the planning board when they reviewed it and recommended approval at their last meeting. Those included these as, in their motion. So next steps, this is the presentation and the discussion. We'd like to set the public hearing for November 15th and would, going along with this timeline that's been discussed along the way, would, you know, hope that we could move towards adoption at that meeting and be moving from the planning and the development phase and move to the implementation phase of this plan. And that's all I have for my presentation, and I will, if there's any questions or comments, I'll do my best to answer, but I will also going to lean on our great planning director here for anything technical you might have.
Awesome. Good job. Any questions or comments for Patrick? Mr. Granis?
I didn't hear a lot about the comments pertaining to schools, and I didn't see much in the plan unless I overlooked it. But my question is this, have we had any discussions with either the school board or school administrators pertaining to this plan? And if we have, could you share with us what sort of comments they've had?
I believe they were part of the stakeholder process in our stakeholder meetings. I know that there is, and I'd have to look in and dig to find the section, but I know there's specifically a bullet point in there or a goal in there for coordination specifically with public schools. And also, I think in addition to that would also be our charter schools, as we're seeing more of those come up to make sure that, you know, regardless of feelings on them, they're part of the system, and we want to make sure we have them, you know, engaged and part of this process as we're thinking about things moving forward. In terms of specific outreach that we've had, again, I think they were invited to stakeholder meetings, but beyond that, there has not been more conversation in there except for acknowledging the fact that there needs to be more and that being a goal. And certainly emphasis could be put on that goal as we continue to move forward with implementation of this project.
And the other question I had was, did we engage with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization? And if so, could you share what that interaction was like and what were the results?
Absolutely. So part of this, part of this plan worked fairly well. They're in the process of updating their metropolitan transportation plan, so the MTP 2050. So a lot of their work in building the model out there, their community vis application and other maps have really been, that's been going on over this past six to nine months. So while we haven't necessarily reviewed this specific plan and given them to them, a lot of the elements in here from our roadway work, from our pedestrian and parks maps and things like that are all elements that we've been working back and forth with them on leading up to this. So to make sure that the reflection that they have in their models as moving forward reflects kind of the direction that this was going, not assuming that, of course, that this was going to, you know, stay stagnant, but want to make sure kind of where the direction and the comments were going, that those things were reflected in there. So I'd say there's been good engagement along the way here with Campo as we move forward. And I know, and I think even as we've been talking about the commuter rail project and the Bus Rapid Transit project, those same sort of ideas, how that's woven in with some of the Project Goodwill pieces, a lot, there's been a lot of conversation and engagement with them over the past year as we've been working on the development of this.
One of the reasons I brought that up, and I know you're well aware of this, Patrick, is Campo is very adept at being able to take plans and evaluate them with respect to populated or new potential population areas or for development. And they also obviously have a lot of foresight with respect to the roadways that may be in those specific areas, and that's one of the main reasons I brought that up.
Yeah, and I think that's where we had a specific, we specifically got a group together at one point to look at some of the key nodes and gateways where we've heard either proposals or know that development activity is either occurring or we know that there's interest there and made sure that their models reflected that, some of that activity there. So is there running the models to see where trips are going to be generated and thinking about what the capacity of those roadways are, that they're not thinking about Clayton five years ago or 10 years ago when they're doing it? They're thinking about Clayton now and really looking forward in that and where we're going. So their models reflect that, which should position us for, you know, for that roadway investment and transit investment moving forward, which is what we wanted to make sure is critical when you're growing at a pace like we are.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, sir. We will set a public hearing for November 15th for the growth plan discussion. All right. Up next on the agenda is the Park and Recreation GO bond issuance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Robert Mackay, Finance Director. Tonight, we have four items on the agenda. The first three are related to a refunding opportunity of the GL bonds we issued back in 2009. Davenport identified if we do a refunding on those, we have potential savings of about $236,000. By refunding those now, they'd be at a more favorable terms. These original 2009 bonds we issued, they mature in August of 2029. So the maturity date would still basically stay the same. The town manager and I have had a conversation subsequent to the agenda deadline, and I want to talk about potential another option for council to consider. That is the town outright paying those off, not refunding, issuing more bonds to refund those, but to actually pay those bonds off, pay that par value off, plus accrued interest. So the par value right now in those bonds is $2 million. We'd have accrued interest of less, a little less than $35,000. If we do that, that results in net savings of approximately $343,000. I make that recommendation contingent upon us, the town continuing to keep that debt service budget where it's at. So we keep that, we don't lose that money, that debt service that we would not make each year, we keep that reserved in the budget for future. So if council is willing to consider or wants to move forward with outright paying it off, the first three items, we won't take action on tonight.
All right. Questions or comments, Mr. Granis?
Robert, if we choose to pay it off early, where does the money come from?
What's the pardon?
If we choose to pay off early, where does the money come from?
It would, it would come out of our fund balance, our reserves. You know, those coupon, the coupon rates, the interest rate on the bonds we currently have between now and the end of 2029, that rate is between 4 and 4.375%. So by paying those off, we're in essence earning that rate of return versus right now, we're earning less than 1/2% on our investment earnings. Interest rates are really low, so we have, by doing this, we're actually achieving a higher rate of return. Yes, we have to use fund balance, but you're going to get that back over the course of time, which is why I say we keep the, you maintain that debt service budget where it's at.
Unfortunately, I like the idea of Mr. Mayor.
I agree.
All right. So do we need to put that in the form of a motion? Or how, what type of?
I think we just strike the first three items. We don't need to take action on them. If you take action on those first three items, I don't know if you want to go through, take the action and just deny it, or you just want to strike them. Jim, what do you, defer to you on that? Should we have council decline on each one of those?
I don't think any action is needed on those first three items.
All right.
I think you just, you need, you need direction to pay off the balances, if that's what.
I think we just need council to take action and say you're authorizing us to pay those, pay the existing 2009 bonds off outright, and we'll move forward with doing that.
Okay. There are no prepayment penalties of any kind.
These no prepayment penalties, alls we're going to do is pay the face value, $2 million, plus the accrued interest that's due to the point where we have to pay them off.
You have the option to do that at any time.
Yep. Yes, we do.
I think council would just direct that that be done.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we go ahead and pay off the bond early and utilize the fund balance to do so.
All right. We have a motion and a second for paying off those 2009 bonds early. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay. All right. Well, we do need to take action on the last item, Resolution 2021-58. That is the, our actual GL bonds for 2021. That's the $13.5 million that we're going to be issuing for the Parks and Rec. So we're asking council to take action on this and approve this tonight, which will allow us to move forward with the bond sale.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Granis?
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2021-58.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the Resolution Number 2021-58. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Up next on the agenda is the Park and Recreation Personnel and Budget Amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before y'all this evening is a request to adopt ordinance 2021-11-01, which is essentially what we talked about before. We entered into the joint use agreement with Clayton High School for the management of the athletic fields as well as access to the gym facilities, cafeteria, and some other auxiliary facilities at the site. Inside your packet is kind of a one cheater, two-sided. The breakdown of the front half shows by-line item where the dollars will be moved to and from, and then on the back, there's really kind of a summary explanation. In short, it's essentially a $250,000 one-year investment, and then in subsequent years, it'll be to the tune of around $150,000 on an annual basis, plus or minus with, you know, raises, a promotion and, you know, just increasing cost, seed, fertilizer, that kind of thing. But if y'all have any questions, I'm wide open, but otherwise, I just ask y'all to adopt the proposed ordinance.
All right. Thank you, sir. Questions or comments?
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2021-11-01.
I have a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance Number 2021-11-01. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right. Now you're stuck with me. I'm back for new business. All right. So the next one in front of y'all this evening, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, is the request to adopt two ordinances. One first is 2021-11-02, and then the subsequent one is 2021-11-03, which is just a single fee. This is the creation of a parks-specific chapter in our ordinance. This is something that our department has needed for a number of years, and we've worked with our partners in the police department as well as fire to review. These are a number of chapters that are preserved for future expansion, and this ordinance was one that we used from some sister communities. Some of this language has been acquired, but it's also been reviewed by legal as well. And it really is a valuable tool to us so that when staff or law enforcement officers are asking folks to change behavior, remove a vehicle, stop stealing my trees, any of the other things that they may do on a daily basis, now there's some teeth behind that. And, you know, we want to walk quietly, but sometimes having a big stick is handy as well. So this evening, if y'all don't have any other questions, which I'm wide open to, we'd ask for the adoption of these two ordinances. The second one is a fee for the commercial use, which is one of the things that we've not previously specifically addressed before, where we're asking persons that are making money using public facilities to number one, request that, and then number two, reserve the facilities that they're utilizing to parlay their business, whether that be tennis lessons, individual soccer coaching, batting practice, yoga lessons, you name it.
Gotcha.
It runs a pretty wide gamut. It runs a pretty wide gamut.
Gotcha. Questions or comments for staff? Mr. Bun?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2021-11-02.
Second.
A motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2021-11-02. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank y'all very much.
Hold on, Mr. Bun?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2021-11-03.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance 2021-11-03. Is there any further discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bun.
Scott, would you stick around for the council comment? Thank you.
Up next on the agenda is the extension agreement.
Mayor and council, this agreement is between us and Novo Nordisk regarding the wastewater pretreatment facility. As you recall, that facility was constructed by Novo and dedicated to the town in 2019. At the time, because they were still waiting for validation of their facility, and use of that wastewater pretreatment plant was solely on them to confirm the, the design validation. We entered into agreement that put them in charge of operating that until such time that it was up and running and dialed in, for lack of a better term. They are still obviously in that growth phase, and so the agreement is set to actually sunset today. However, we are recommending both staff and at the request of Novo to extend that by two years. That'll give them sufficient amount of time to finalize their validation, scale up the facility, and verify the overall design of the pretreatment plant prior to the official takeover of the town. So that, it's really just a two-year extension of the existing terms.
All right, questions or comments for staff? All right. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, will you authorize the staff to execute the agreement?
Second.
A motion and a second for staff, authorizing them to execute this agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving right along to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
A few items discussed this evening. First and foremost, I just wanted to give a quick update on our COVID policies. Some of you may have seen other jurisdictions in the area are beginning to release some of the mask mandates that they currently have. Our plan as of, as of late has been to wait until this Friday when we have the next update call from the county. At that point, we'll receive the latest numbers and get some direction from them in terms of where they see us going over the next coming months. So I would say next council meeting would be when we'd probably bring back any changes to the current COVID protocols that we've got in place. Sticking along the lines of kind of safety, the men of you are aware that Jeffra has informed us of her plan to retire at the end of the year. We will be posting that replacement job hopefully by the end of this week, so we'll be looking to backfill that. With any luck, we might be able to have somebody in place prior to her leaving so that we can have a little bit of overlap between the two, but that certainly would be the intent. Also on the personnel side, we will be posting the data analyst position. That'll be going out later this week as well. That was one of the positions that was approved with the recent budget, and so we are looking forward to get that in here and help us with some of the business analyses that we need done. Just want to remind all of you that we will be meeting on the 10th for the discussion of the Parks and Rec bond. We, at that point, we should have all the information from both the municipal park, design build, GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, as well as the bids in for East Clayton Park. The intent of that meeting will be to make some final decisions with regards to what total elements will be included in the parks moving forward so that on the 15th, we can get any final budget amendments done to go ahead and solidify us issuing those contracts. So exciting to be at that point, but hopefully it'll be an easy decision for us on the 10th. Along that, along the lines with the Parks and Rec, an item came, came to us, I think through the Recreation Foundation, with the request to have an opportunity to sell a sponsorship for the band shell in the future municipal park project. Right now, they do have somebody interested in providing a donation to that effort. As of right now, we have not formalized necessarily what elements of the different parks we would be willing to entertain sponsorships. However, in this particular case, I think our recommendation would be to go ahead and move forward with finalizing this specific one, as well as potentially developing an MOU or some other agreement between us and the foundation to give some other future opportunities, as I think there's going to be several others. I'm looking at Scott, he's shaking his head. We've got some other ideas of items that we would like to possibly give the foundation as an opportunity to move forward with, looking at any sponsorship or, or donation opportunities. So just looking for some direction from you all tonight as to whether or not we can move forward with the current band shell request that's been put out there, as well as looking to formalize that agreement.
Is that for an extended period of time?
So as.
Or is that forever, or what is that?
Going to go off the top of my head, but I'm going to phone a friend in case I get this wrong. The agreement, as, as I've seen it drafted to this point, would be for five years.
Okay.
As of right now, the recommendation or the, the offer is to donate approximately, to donate $75,000 for that five-year sponsorship opportunity.
I like it.
All right. All right, I didn't mess that one up. So I guess my question to you all would be, are you okay with us moving forward to get that? Mainly the, the association or the foundation has them enter into their agreement with, with the entity. Obviously, we then have to have our agreement with the association to move that forward as well.
Mr. Holder?
Seems to me we ought to have some special regulations for that. Oh, it would be wise, thought I think, was to see what other towns have from their standpoint in advertising parks and recreation facilities and so forth. We won't be careful, we said in person, we can't break if it's not sound.
Yeah, and I think, and Scott, I'll be, you know, if you've got other examples of other municipalities that have done similar, but I think for my, at least for my, my utilizing some of those facilities, things like band shells, amphitheaters, those typically have been allowed to be, for sponsorships to be sold. That's where I think if we can go ahead and get us, an agreement between us and the foundation to specify what other opportunities that we may be willing to consider as they're approached, or as others may approach us, and be able to formalize that a little bit moving forward, I think that'll be good practice in general to set up. For this particular one, being that it is the band shell, I do think that is a common, common element of a, of a park system that would be open to a sponsorship.
All right, anyone else?
I don't, I don't think you're looking for approval tonight. You're just looking for endorsement, we'll bring agreements back.
Yep, yes. All right, we have consensus for them to, to bring it back to us with some detail, yes.
We will have that for the next meeting. Yep, we will have that for the next meeting. Another item I want to speak with you all about tonight. We received the final report for the IT assessment that's been conducted over the last better part of, well, this calendar year. Effectively, there's several recommendations in there for immediate improvements, as well as long-term recommendations for how we actually deliver those services, whether we remain with a third party or bring it in-house. I think from those of us that have had a chance to really dive into it from a staff level, I think for me, the overarching theme is we're going to need somebody with the expertise to be able to lead us down this path to, to handle the, the IT basically function as we move forward. So what we're looking to do is potentially at the next meeting, bring forward another budget amendment that would set forth the ability to potentially hire either an IT director or title to be finalized, as well as another support staff for them to be able to help move forward and manage the transition of some of those efforts. Just want to put that on your radar so that you're aware that that's going to be coming forward. With that, there are some significant capital investments, both from the external infrastructure, things like fiber line installations, but also in terms of the hardware, servers, other equipment, just in general associated with the, the IT function. So we will bring you forward a proposal at the next meeting so that you can kind of see how we see it playing out. But the report does give a pretty good game plan on how to do that. Any questions on that? Mr. Granis?
Mr. Granis?
So it, it sounds as though we might be headed toward the in-house process, to me anyways. What sort of savings would we be looking at, if at all?
So based on the report, the first, to answer your first question, yes. The report does recommend that we could potentially, now at the size of the organization that we're in and the demands that we have, it could, it would be more cost-effective to be able to provide many of those services internally. I want to be cautious in terms of when you say cost savings, because there is a fair amount of upfront investment. However, those are things that we've been working with, the finance department, to be able to figure out what's that balance of capital investment and, over time, to get to, but maybe a more in-house, deliverable. The, the recommendations as of current day could be fairly significant in the hundreds of, you know, $100,000 a year range, once we're all up and, you know, up and running. But again, frankly, I can, I've stretched my knowledge and understanding of this particular subject about as far as we can, but have enough of an understanding to know that we really need to get somebody in-house that can, that can really carry the ball with regard to the IT function. So that would be the recommendation moving forward.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but the cost savings that you're referring to would be like an annual budgetary savings.
That is correct.
Whereas the investment you're talking about is a capital investment, which is entirely separate from the annual budget. Because it would be on a CIP scenario, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So hearing that, we will bring an item forward at the next meeting, just so we can make, make some moves there, because I'd love to be able to have somebody in-house, in, in the position just after the first of the year, and it'll take us every bit of a couple of months to find that person potentially. Another item, we just received applications or proposals for replacement of three Greenway bridges along our Greenway system. They're in the Riverwood area. We've had some conversations about those. They are at the end of their useful life. We've done several repairs and, and kind of maintenance items on them to go ahead and make sure we can extend the life of them as far as being able to keep them in service. However, they will need to be replaced. That is an item that we are recommending, we utilize additional fund balance to be able to fund those. I believe by next meeting, we could hopefully have that recommendation of both the firm, but more importantly, getting the capital projects set up so that we can move forward with getting construction contracts in place. So we'll have additional information, but want to put that on your radar, that'll be coming next meeting. And then the last thing I have on my agenda, or on my, on my comments, we are in the process of performing the mid-year, or starting the mid-year budget review. That was something that we implemented last year during COVID that we intend to continue this year. Right now, the staff will be beginning, basically in the month of November, compiling their information and submitting it sometime mid-December right now. Dates to be finalized, although I think Dolores knows exactly where they are on top of her head. The intent would be to bring forward a recommendation at the second meeting in January to the council to recommend both mid-year adjustments that are necessary to be able to continue between now and June 30th, but also identify any items that we feel like need to be deferred or just have changed in priority over the last six, six months or so since the budget was adopted. So just want to get, make you aware that that will be coming to you sometime in January. With that, I think that's it for me.
Awesome. Questions or comments, Mr. Granis?
I know that the Lionsgate Bridge on the Greenway has been closed for quite some time, and I realize that that's a, I believe anyways, is an HOA issue. Can you give us an update if anything's happening, and if so, what?
So yes, that, technically, that bid, that bridge is a privately owned bridge by the HOA. We've had some conversations with them over the last better part of a year, it feels like, as to what we see as potential options. I have not gotten an update on that as of recent, but I will make sure by the next meeting we bring more specific information back.
All right, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Rich. Town attorney?
I will report on two property transaction matters that have been previously authorized by council. One was the reacquisition of the Old Town Hall that has been completed. And the second one was the acquisition of 324 Horn Street near the PD that has been closed and is, is completed also.
Good news. Thank you. All right, town clerk?
No reports, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other staff, starting with police chief?
Mr. Mayor, madam clerk, members of the council. I'm here tonight to briefly talk about an update to a priority of mine that I spoke to you all about last November when I came in as the interim chief. Subsequently came the permanent chief. And I presented a plan to you all back in the council retreat earlier this year of priorities that I had. And one of those priorities at the top of the list was adding body cameras to the police department. And I had it put in our current fiscal year budget for the police department. You all graciously approved it and funded. And I'm here tonight to say that it has been fully implemented. We purchased the cameras back in July and all the accessories that go with them. Due to the supply chain issues that are going across the country, it took a little longer to get them. However, we recently received them. We've done training, wrote policies, and they are fully implemented. And Officer Johnson, if you'll come up here, just to give you an idea of what it looks like, as you can see it here. So I just wanted to give you a brief update on, and let you know that we had accomplished that goal. And just to say thank you again for your support of funding the project and, as always, your continued support for the police department. So thank you.
How, how does that thing stay on there? How does that stay in place?
Magnetic.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure I wasn't like seeing things or whatever. Good work, chief.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. All right, up next, under staff reports, is a Harvest Festival update. I asked earlier if there were any changes to the agenda, and they said no, but apparently you're not Amy.
Praying me tonight.
Welcome, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Lee Barbie, Fire Chief. Harvest Festival was wrapped up yesterday, is a very busy five days downtown. The Chamber put on a wonderful event, event we have been missing for the last two years. The feedback from the businesses, local businesses, have been overwhelmingly positive. We're thankful for that. As always, town staff has come together. Took a lot of departments to, to work with the Chamber to help put this on. Clay Police Department, Fire Department, Property Maintenance, Public Information Office, Economic Development, Park Maintenance, Public Works, Water Sewer, Customer Service, and Electric Department. So we had a good, good turnout of staff participating, very proud of them. And Public Information Office has put together a video, I'd like to show that, and then I'll follow up with any questions you might have. any questions you might have. So, I rode through town this morning, I know there's still some cleaning that to be done. The trash and the portage on delivery, that's on the Chamber, they're working on that. Town staff's been around trying to get cones and barricades up, so hopefully by tomorrow, we'll see a big difference in the cleanup. Chamber is planning to do a follow-up meeting next week, so we can discuss what we did well, what didn't, give us that opportunity to make adjustments for the next year. One last thing I'd like to say before, if you have any questions. So, in January, we created emergency management positions, special events, where Amy come under the Fire Department. We've had a number of challenges throughout the year. I think this is one of the bigger tests for her and the Chamber. Early on, back then, January, February, I met with the Chamber and introduced Amy to them, told them how we were planning to make changes, and that relationship has been very good this year. Every time I check with Amy and check with the Chamber, things are going great. So, I just want to thank you for that opportunity to bring Amy in as that emergency management coordinator. She's still learning a lot, but she has that passion to make sure that the communication is done between the town and the community. So, thank you for that. I'll be glad to answer any questions about it, if you have any.
Questions or comments? All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Lee, I told, told Rich you could do that.
I can do it.
Okay. Next year, I'm just going to request that the cameraman actually be on some of the rides, so that we can see what it's like to be on a ride without having to get on there. Nathaniel, Catherine, be looking forward to that. All right, thank you, chief.
Sir.
Up next is other business, and it's time for informal discussion and public comment.
Ladder truck update.
Oh, how could I forget that?
I don't know.
Well, I can tell you, it would help if I had these, but you know, some, I'm still trying to get used to having them around. Yeah, look at there, the next item on the agenda is the ladder truck update, chief.
Good evening. Matt Suffin had intended to be here, but we had situation today, so he's dealing with one of our staff members at the hospital, filling in for him. I just wanted to update you on the ladder truck. Our staff is in Wisconsin today, they went up this morning for final inspection of the vehicle. This is a 100-foot mid-mout platform, the length of it is 43, about 44 foot, carries 300 gallons of water, has a 2,000 GPM pump. The one, the next, the other thing I'd really like to point out to you, see if I can show it, show you a better picture here. Come on, Nathaniel, where they at? All right, rear end, I wish this was at the front to show you. This is what I call T3 technology. This is the only mid-mout ladder truck in North Carolina at present, that has this rear steering. There's two things about this truck, when we ordered it, that we felt like we needed for Clayton. We've got tight streets, we've got existence subdivisions that are very tight, so the footprint of this truck, when you put the outriggers out, is a smaller footprint than your normal ladder trucks, that are 100-foot ladder trucks. Also, the turning radius on this truck is tighter than normal ladder trucks because of the three, T3 technology. There are other ones in the United States, but this is the first one that was built in North Carolina, so I thought that's just something to add in for you to know. When they get through with the inspection, probably in the next 10 days, this ladder's going to be driven from Appleton, Wisconsin, Greensboro, North Carolina, to the shop in Greensboro for Atlantic. From there, our guys will go up, meet with them, they will start mounting the loose equipment on this truck, so probably in, hopefully in the next three weeks, we'll see it being delivered to Clayton. So, hopefully before Thanksgiving, it'll be here. We had new staffing that's being added by the end of the year, so our plan is to put this truck in service first of the year, with a staffed ladder company, and it'll be housed at Station 2. There's a full-year warranty, bumper-to-bumper on this truck, including motor and transmission warranties from the vendors. The cost of this truck was 1.5, 1.45 million for the apparatus, 170,000 for the equipment, total of 1.62 million. Appreciate the support from the council. This has been a bottom-up process for our guys. We had a committee that we reenacted from previous years. These guys that'll be operating this truck have helped build this truck. I learned a long time ago, if you want to keep your complaints down, get the guys involved. And they've definitely been involved in this, so we certainly appreciate it.
That's awesome, would be a great asset for the town of Clayton.
Thank you.
Up next, under other business, is informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Honorable mayor, councilman, town staff, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Stuart McLeod. I'm here tonight to respectfully protest the recent vote by the council. I've called Clayton home for 24 years. I don't live inside the city limits, so I'm not voting tomorrow, but I do own property in town, and I pay taxes here. As a former publisher and owner of the Clayton News Star, I've been in this room many, many times, and I'm proud to call Clayton home. I am entrenched in Clayton. The taxes I pay, I'm happy to do that, because of the services the town of Clayton provides its citizenry and business owners. I'm not happy with the actions that the town has taken regarding its partnership with the YMCA. Since I moved to Clayton in 97, I've been a YMCA volunteer, I've chaired the local advisory board, and I've served as chairman on the annual We Build People campaign. That's a philanthropic effort to provide YMCA opportunities for families that otherwise could not afford them. Currently, I serve on the Board of Trustees for the YMCA of the Triangle. For over 26 years, the YMCA has served thousands of children and families in Clayton, Johnston County, through YI services and programs ranging from youth, youth sports, to after-school care, to summer day camp, to remedial after-school tutoring, and to the lauded youth and government program for teens. The list goes on. And let's not forget the mission of the YMCA, to put Christian principles into practice that build a healthy spirit, mind, and body for all. I was also the founding member and the first president of the Johnston United Soccer Association, now News River Soccer. I spearheaded the agreement between the YI and JUSA regarding use of the Powhatan fields. Volunteers from JUSA worked tirelessly and have spent tens of thousands of dollars to create a top-flight soccer and youth sports facility that sits on the Powhatan land today. Because of the unwavering passion and love that parents have for their children, the partnership between the YI and JUSA has not always been smooth sailing, but it did remain intact. I'm here tonight sadly, because the actions taken by you on September 20th, the future of soccer and youth sports on those Powhatan fields is in question. That night, the council unanimously voted to terminate a lease for athletic fields on Powhatan Road that the town had with the YMCA of the Triangle. During time set aside for council comments, a motion was made, seconded, and the vote was made with no discussion. The item was not listed on the agenda, no notice or warning was given to the YMCA, or other reason was given for the lease termination. Because of this shameful action, over 2,000 youth sports participants with the YMCA, Johnston United Soccer Association, and the News River Soccer Association may lose access to these fields. Over the years, the economic impact these fields have had on the town is immeasurable. Nearly every weekend, families and children from across the region come to Clayton for soccer matches and tournaments. They bring their wallets and their pocketbooks too. Gas stations, convenience stores, restaurants, retailers benefit tremendously. So do the tax coffers of the town of Clayton. I want to share some background. In 2017, the town of Clayton approached the YMCA of the Triangle about the possibility of a land swap for the YI's land on Powhatan Road, for a piece of property you guys recently purchased, had recently purchased on Amelia Church Road. This was done at the urgent of Nova Nordisk, a major industry employing thousands of local people. The town of Clayton needed a portion of the YI's property for a pre-treatment wastewater plant. The YMCA agreed to swap their developed land, that had the athletic fields on it, for undeveloped land on Amelia Church Road. Until the land on Amelia Church was developed for athletic fields, the ability for the YMCA and other youth sports organizations to continue using the Powhatan land that was not part of the wastewater treatment plant was paramount to the agreement. The deal went through, but what has been forgotten is the goodwill gesture the YMCA made to help the town of Clayton support a major industry that represents billions of dollars of investments in our community. This agreement also paves the way for additional municipal services to accommodate future expansion for the biotech industry, and that is an industry we are all very thankful for. YMCA of the Triangle, hundreds of local families, and I are extremely disappointed with your decision. Council has been reminded of the 180-day notice that's required to terminate the lease. The YMCA asks you to reconsider your decision, and they ask you to work to better understand their intentions and determine if there can be a better outcome. You know, in the next month, if the decision is not reversed, the YMCA will have to look for alternate space to continue youth sports programming. More importantly, the Powhatan fields will no longer have thousands of young people and their families playing, screaming, laughing, and cheering. Do you want that on your shoulders? Please reconsider the vote to terminate the lease with the YI, and please work with Melissa Oliver and her team to rebuild that relationship and partnership. Our community will be the beneficiary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stuart. Anyone else? All right, no one else wishing to speak, I'll turn it over to council for comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bub.
I'd like to respond to Mr. McLeod's statement he just made about the property on Powhatan Road. I think you called the town giving the YMCA an undeveloped piece of property, like it was devalued. Do you know how much the value of that piece of land was? Over a million dollars. And I think you came out pretty good on the deal. The town of Clayton does not support any organization to make money on town property. Bottom line, it'd be like me walking into town tomorrow and setting up office, trying to make a dollar on the sales. I can't help it's the YMCA, we don't, we don't do it with the Civitan Club. There's only two organizations that we, we help in the year, and that's the Rotary Club for the Christmas Parade, and the Clayton Chamber of Commerce with the Harvest Festival, which we, we, we supplied with staff. So, everybody's been running around town talking bad about the town of Clayton, jerking the contract. Y'all knew about the contract termination weeks ahead of time before we did that. So, don't act like it was a surprise, because it won't, because our manager and our lawyer was talking to your folks, and you could not come to a deal. So, I'm not going to sit here and listen to, to poor me, poor children, and you talk about the tax base. Tell me about the tax base that you support, out on Powhatan Road or out at Flowers Plantation. It's not the city limits. So, I don't mean to come down hard on you on this, but we've been catching a lot of grief by trying to do well for the taxpayers of the town of Clayton, taking back a piece of our property that we own, so we can expand, and you would not release us from playing soccer on the field. Bottom line, you would not release us. There was an agreement made, that y'all would move out there four years ago to Amelia Church Road and build your soccer facilities, and we would give you $150,000 to help you do that. You never did that. You had four years to do it, you never did it. It's, it's time for us to end that contract and move on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other comments from council? Mr. Grandis?
I'd just like to extend my gratitude to all the departments that were involved with the Harvest Festival this weekend, and also extend my congratulations to the Chamber for having a very successful event. To me, that collaboration continues to show that, that we can collaborate in public-private agreements, in associations, and partnerships. So, a very hearty thank you to our team, and a very hearty thank you to the Chamber.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Bub?
Scott, can you come to the mic? We've had some side discussions about this.
We've had some side discussions about this, but is there any possible way by the next meeting that you could have a number for us for the Loop Road project for those fields? A hard number so we can make a decision?
Budget number for you, yes, sir.
We'd like to make some sort of decision by the next meeting possibly. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Well, I would just like to thank everybody for all their good work this evening. I want to thank our chamber and reiterate what Mr. Grantis said about how fabulous the Harvest Festival was. Could be wrong, but I'm willing to bet that that was probably the biggest one we've ever had in the history of the town of Clayton. I've never seen parking extended so many blocks beyond Main and Second Street and I've lived here my entire life. I think that just goes to show that we have a wonderful community here and people enjoy celebrating and honoring our hometown. Another way that you can do that tomorrow is Election Day polls. There are two polls in Clayton. They both open at 6:30 and stay open until 7:30 PM tomorrow evening. And good luck to all of our candidates. All right, is there anything else to come before this council? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move with your heart.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.